Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission Meeting of Monday, September 23rd, 2024. I now call the meeting to order. If we all please stand, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance together, please.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. Anna, a voice roll call, please.
Chair Erith.
Present.
Vice Chair Toller.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas.
Here.
Commissioner Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Andrade.
Here.
Commissioner Klepak.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
All right, thank you. And I see we have no announcements or presentations, which brings us to public comments. Pardon me, for matters that are not listed on tonight's agenda. If anyone in chambers wishes to speak, you're welcome to come to either podium. All right, I don't see anybody in chambers. So Anna, if we have anyone on Zoom... Oh, you, sir. Yes, sir. You'll have three minutes. At the one-minute mark, you'll hear a ding, and then it'll just shut off after three minutes. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is... Excuse me. My name is Jason Piazza. I'm a resident here in Costa Mesa. I grew up in Costa Mesa. I've got three kids that I'm raising here now, and I just wanted to say that this is a fantastic applicant, and I'm really excited to...
Oh, just for matters that are not listed on the agenda?
Oh, well, excuse me.
You know, it'll take maybe all but five more minutes, and then I'll call you back up.
Drinking violet.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the enthusiasm. Anna, anyone on Zoom or telephone?
No, there is not, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Now close public comments and turn to Planning Commissioner's comments and suggestions, starting with Commissioner Martinez.
All right. While the presentation gets loaded up, I'll just quickly say Happy Hispanic Heritage Month. Feliz Dia de la Herencia Hispano, todos que celebran. And, let's see. On Saturday at 2:00 PM, the Costa Mesa Historical Society and Councilmember Arliss Reynolds will be hosting a bike ride. You can meet up at the Costa Mesa Historical Society. Next week is the Week Without Driving. I encourage all to participate and try out, even if it's just for a day, trying to get around your normal routine by not using a car, by using any other method, by walking, by biking, by using transit. I sure will, because I can't drive. I don't have car insurance. So I encourage you all to join me. Last Saturday, I attended the Energy Bill Savings Workshop, and in that spirit, I wanted to just show some residential rebates and residential programs that are available to Costa Mesa residents, not just relating to energy, but everything. So here is programs from SoCal Edison. If you fall under these income limits, you are eligible to receive up to 30% off for care or up to 18% discount for FERA from your electric bills. So if you do qualify, make sure you apply. Next is also a SoCal Edison. If you are late on some of your bills, you can apply for that program. And there are also discounts available for qualified tenants. SoCal Gas also has similar programs to CARE and that kind of thing. Next is, I believe, City of Costa Mesa. Not exactly a rebate program, but using Costa Mesa 311, which is a city app, you can report all of these different things, including, I've personally used graffiti and cracked uneven sidewalks reporting, and the city will go out and fix them at no cost to you and clean up graffiti and fix uneven sidewalks. There's also a Parkway Tree Planting Program, and the information is there. If you don't have a tree in front of your house in the city-owned right-of-way, then you can feel free to request one. Next, I just wanted to put this up in case this hasn't been shared or if you don't know about it. If you're a tenant, we do have a Just Cause Residential Tenant Protection Ordinance. The information is here. You can feel free to pause on your own and read this information. It's also available on the city's website. We also have, from the City of Costa Mesa, next slide is a... This won't load for me. But home loan programs and a grant program to rehabilitate single-family homes if you are income-qualified. So if you make under 80% of median area income, then you can qualify for these programs. Next. The Costa Mesa Sanitary District also has a rebate program for sewer inspections. It's up to $500, depending on the type of inspection you do. You could get a CCTV video of your sewer. I think that's probably one of the lower ones, lower rebate amounts. Or you could get a new ground-level cleanout, and the Costa Mesa Sanitary District will rebate your costs. Next is also Costa Mesa Sanitary District. If you have household hazardous waste or if you have large items that need to be disposed, the Costa Mesa Sanitary District can take care of that for you, and you don't have to pay to remove it yourself. Next, I believe, would be Mesa Water with a pool cover rebate, up to $50 in case your pool is evaporating very quickly. You are eligible to receive... You might be eligible to receive a $50 rebate for a pool cover. Next, I believe, is the Municipal Water District of Orange County. They have a turf replacement program. If you have a grass lawn, then you are... You can be eligible to receive up to $3 per square foot to replace your turf, your normal turf, with a lovely-looking thing like this, like the picture in here. It has these requirements, and if you plant up to five trees, you can get an up to extra $500. And if you use a landscape designer, you can also get an extra $1,000 to cover design costs. And while you're doing your turf replacement, next slide is free mulch from OC Waste and Recycling. They have free mulch at landfill. So all you have to do is make an appointment and bring your own tools to get your mulch. And then going next one is still MODOC. They have a spray-to-drip program to change your sprinklers to drip. This conserves water and can save you money on your water bills. And then I think finally on the presentation is the Metropolitan Water District, which is a lot of the SoCal region, which is any, basically any device that uses water, there's probably a rebate available for it, so you can check that out. And what I didn't include on here is OCTA, which has discounts available if you are a senior. And if you're a youth, you can ride free on OCTA. Now, I share all of this partly because of the Energy Bill Savings Workshop, and this is important information for a resident to know. But I also do recognize that this is a Planning Commission meeting. I don't think we have anyone in the room in person who is just a general member of the public. And I don't know how many of you are watching online. If you are, hello. But I think that sharing this information is important, but I want to make the broader point that how we share information, how we collect feedback, I think is a bit flawed, and I hope that we can improve it. For example, like this public hearing that we're going to have tonight, it's noticed with an onsite notice, with a 500-foot notice. So really, it's going to be the people who are adjacent to the site who know that this project is happening at all and only people who really deeply care, if they have a very strong opinion, is most likely who is going to even send in a public comment. And it's not even just a strong opinion. It's probably a strong negative opinion is who is going to be commenting. If someone is just slightly positive, if someone is neutral, they're not going to send in a comment saying that. And if someone who doesn't know about it, because they weren't notified, would have commented, then they won't, because they won't know that this is happening. We also have specific engagement meetings on issues, like the Fairview Developmental Center, which I thought we were going to talk about tonight, but we are not. But that involves people with time who can go to those meetings, attending those meetings, people with that specific time block available to go to those meetings. And again, it's probably a lot of people with strong opinions or who are already knowledgeable about that issue that can go and attend those meetings. And I also worry about a lack of representation at specific engagement meetings like that. For example, I'm probably the youngest person in the room at any engagement meeting that I go to, which is unfortunate. I would hope that we have more youth participation, especially with something like Fairview Developmental Center, because the impacts of that project are going to be felt even after I'm dead. So I would hope that people as young and younger than me have a say in this project. So I'd hope that we can go to events. And in the spirit of not only providing negative comments, I'd like to give some props to where I think we're doing very well. For example, when Concerts in the Park was going on, the Development Services Department had a little setup for the Fairview Developmental Center. I think that's great. That's fantastic. We're engaging the community where they're at at a fun event. At Northgate, there was a pop-up event on, again, Fairview Developmental Center. That's great. We're meeting the community where they are. So I'd like to ask that we go to these city events. For example, on Saturday, here's one I didn't announce. On Saturday, there's a Hispanic Heritage Month celebration, and I believe it's at Lyons Park in the morning. So going to that, having Spanish availability, just having a quick conversation about either info-sharing, such as the information, all the rebates and stuff like that that I provided at the beginning, or about specific projects that are going on. I would really like to see that happen so that we aren't just hearing from the same people over and over again. And I will admit to being one of those same people we hear from. And I'd also like to go to events that aren't city-sponsored. Like, if we go to Hispanic Heritage Month Celebration, we go to Concerts in the Park, these are all city events. We can go anyways. But like, I went to the swap meet with my mom. We walked over there, and I was looking. I was honestly looking for any information that was being given out, not just someone selling something, but someone giving information. And I didn't find any, and I found that disappointing. So I just hope that we can improve our community engagement process so that we truly hear from all of our residents and not just those that are available, for example, at 6:00 PM on a Monday night. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Commissioner Klepak.
I have nothing to add, but thank you for mentioning all those programs and services, because I was writing them down. I participated in probably most of them, and they're really easy to participate in and take advantage of. So thanks for bringing those to everybody's attention.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Klepak. Off to my right, Commissioner Rojas.
No comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Zick?
No comments.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Andrade?
No comments.
All right, Vice Chair.
No comments, except thank you to Commissioner Martinez for all that valuable information.
Yeah, and I'll second or third that in saying thank you for sharing all those programs. That's really interesting. Thank you. All right, move things along. This brings us to the Consent Calendar. I see we have two Consent Calendar items tonight. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the Planning Commission staff or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the Consent Calendar for discussion. Items removed from the Consent Calendar will be discussed and voted upon immediately following Planning Commission action on the remainder of the Consent Calendar. And if you would, Anna, please read the title of Consent Calendar item. I don't know if we're going to vote on them together or separately.
It will be together.
Together. If you could read the titles, please.
Consent Calendar Items Minutes. August 26th, 2024, unofficial meeting minutes. March 14th, 2022, unofficial meeting minutes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Colleagues, do you have any comments on the minutes? All right, seeing none. We have a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Martinez. What's your motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, is there a second? Second by Toller. Any further discussion? Discussion? All right. Call the question, please.
That motion carries 7-0.
All right, thank you. This brings us to our public hearings. We have one public hearing item tonight. And Anna, if you'd please read the title for Public Hearing Item Number One.
Public Hearing Item Number One. Conditional Use Permit PCUP 240010 for a retail cannabis storefront business with delivery, the Humboldt Connect, located at 2138 Newport Boulevard. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any expertise communications.
All right, thank you, Anna. Starting off to my right, Commissioner Rojas.
I have none.
Okay, Commissioner Zick?
I met with the applicant about a month ago.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Andrade? All right, thank you, ma'am. Vice Chair.
Yeah, I met with the applicant about three weeks ago onsite.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Martinez?
Yes, I met with the applicant on September 2nd onsite, and should I... Yeah, so I also live within 1,000 feet of the proposed property, so I must recuse myself. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Have a good night. Commissioner Klepak?
I met with the applicant at the subject property on September 9th.
Okay, thank you. And I believe I received an email from one of the applicant's representatives, replied to that email in response to asking if I had any questions, to which I said, "Not at the moment." But other than that, that's about the extent of the communication on my end. All right, so I'll now turn it over to Ms. Halligan to present the item. Ms. Halligan.
Good evening, Chair Erith and Commissioners. I'm Michelle Halligan, Senior Planner with the Economic and Development Services Department. The item before you is a request for a conditional use permit to establish a retail cannabis storefront known as the Humboldt Connect. Costa Mesa has approved 25 CUPs for retail cannabis storefronts. 12 have obtained the permits needed to open. These are shown in green. Of the 12, 10 are open today. The 13 other approved CUPs are either under construction, in plan check, or we await their plan checks. The project presented tonight is outlined in blue. The applicant successfully completed the initial steps, including the pre-application, where the location was verified, then the cannabis business permit application, before submitting the CUP application. If the CUP is approved tonight, the applicant would next apply for building permits. The proposed storefront would be located at 2138 Newport Boulevard. The property is Zone C1, Local Business District. Other C1-zoned properties are located to the north, south, and east. State Route 55 is to the west. The properties across the 55 are Zone C2, General Business District. The nearest residentially-zoned property is approximately 110 feet to the south along Newport Boulevard. Here are some photos of the existing building, and this is the proposed site plan. There is a 920-square-foot, single-story building on the property as well as a surface parking lot. All vehicular access is provided via a shared driveway off Newport Boulevard. The applicant proposes to update the building to meet current building and safety codes. Other proposed exterior improvements include landscaping the front setback, including two new trees, installing a bicycle rack to encourage multimodal transportation, installing security lighting and surveillance cameras. As conditioned, a photometric plan would be further reviewed during the building plan check process, construct a trash enclosure, and restripe the parking lot to meet the city's design standards, and improve the landscaping in the parking lot, including two new trees. The proposed storefront includes two distinct areas. The areas where customers are allowed are shown in green. This includes a lobby where customers will have their identification and age verified. After verification, customers would be allowed into the retail sales floor. All customers would exit through the lobby. The red areas of the building are access-controlled, meaning only with employees with the proper security clearance have access. All product loading and unloading would take place by the limited-access door in the rear and always under video surveillance. The applicant provided a detailed business plan that was evaluated by the city's cannabis consultant. It is not attached to the staff report because it contains proprietary details. The business plan describes the owner's professional experience, proof of capitalization, pro forma, and day-to-day operations. The applicant also provided a professionally-prepared security plan, which was reviewed by this cannabis consultant. They determined that appropriate security measures were taken to address both local and state requirements. There are more than 45 standard conditions of approval related to Measure Q cannabis uses. For example, odor control, onsite consumption is prohibited. There are age restrictions for both customers and employees, and there is a renewal process for cannabis business permits every two years. Some additional conditions are proposed, including posting signs in the parking lot related to noise and being considerate of neighbors, limiting the exterior trash from being used between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM, and an employee shall frequently monitor the parking lot. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act per Sequel Guidelines Section 15301, Class 1, Existing Facilities, and approve planning application PCUP-24-10, subject to conditions of approval. The applicant, Chris Trent, and consultant Kate Popova have prepared a presentation for the commission tonight. This concludes staff's presentation.
All right, thank you, Ms. Halligan. Colleagues, do you have any questions for staff on this item before we move along? Commissioner Andrade?
Yeah, sorry, Ms... Excuse me, Ms. Halligan. If you could maybe share with us again the slide with the map of the approved pending... I just wanted to check on... It went by so quickly. I didn't get a chance to see where does 2146, Application 2146 Newport Boulevard, stand? Is it on the green or...
Oh, sure. So there is an approved CUP at 2146 Newport Boulevard. As noted in the staff report, the property owner has submitted an alternative project for plan check and has been meeting with planning and economic development to entitle a different use.
Entitle a different use from what we saw.
Right, so correct. There was a CUP... Or there is a CUP with an approved cannabis storefront in two suites at 2146 Newport. The property owner has submitted plans for a non-cannabis use in those suites.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Anyone else? All right, we'll go ahead and move along. I'll now open the public hearing and ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to come forward. And if you would, please do three things for me. If you'd please state your name for the record. Let us know if you've read the staff report and the conditions of approval, and if so, do you agree to them?
Yes, my name is Chris Trent. I have read the staff report, and I approve.
All right, thank you. The floor is yours if you'd like to make a presentation.
Thank you. My name is Chris Trent. I am the proud owner of the Humboldt Connect LLC. Today, I am excited to personally present my proposal for dispensary at 2138 Newport Boulevard. Although public speaking is definitely not one of my strong suits, I've chosen to present this project myself without extensive third-party assistance because, as the sole owner and operator, I want to ensure that you hear directly from the person who will be running the business and believe this personal touch is crucial in understanding my vision and commitment to this venture and this community. Slide 2. Yeah, slide 2, please. Yes. I have an extensive background in the cannabis industry with over 10 years of experience. This includes founding and managing a cultivation company, including two locations, as well as establishing a non-volatile manufacturing and distribution and transportation company. I choose Costa Mesa for my future retail location because of my special connection to the city. I grew up in and around Costa Mesa, attending Bennett Hicks Private Elementary School. In 2007, I became a victim of a violent crime, which left me temporarily disabled. That's when I discovered medicinal cannabis, which helped me with my pain and regulate my mental health. This personal experience sparked my passion for the medicinal benefits of this cannabis plant, and I am driven to help others access it. As you can see on this slide, our proposed dispensary, located at 2138 Newport Boulevard, offers several key advantages. I personally owned this building for over four years. Recognizing the city's emerging cannabis program, I envisioned repurposing it for a dispensary. Strategically situated, our location benefits from surrounding businesses such as auto body shops, motels, grocery stores, and other commercial establishments. Proximity is about .2 miles from Nectar Dispensary across the freeway and .5 miles from 420 Central Dispensary. The standalone building with 920 square feet and eight parking spaces, as well as parking spaces for vendors and vehicle delivery. Ample distance from residential neighborhoods, approximately 108 feet to the nearest residential property. This slide highlights the exterior upgrades planned for 2138 Newport Boulevard. Our renovations will include updated signage, landscaping enhancements, exterior painting, facade revitalization. These improvements will elevate the property's aesthetics, blending seamlessly into the surrounding areas. Our goal is to create a welcoming and sophisticated presence that complement the neighborhood while also reflecting the professional and approachable atmosphere of the Humboldt Connect LLC. Here's our proposed layout. With security top in mind, we've designed the interior to meet the highest standards. Upon entering, customers will check in with the receptionist in the secure lobby with a waiting room, where a security guard will verify IDs. Our sales force will feature three to four POS locations to efficiently serve customers, plus an express pickup option for online orders, minimizing wait times and maximizing parking options. In the back, we've allocated space for management office, secured record storage, dedicated cannabis storage with limited access, employee break room, loading/unloading zone for secured product receipt and delivery prep. Given our 920-square-foot, every inch counts. I've carefully optimized the layout to provide proprietary security without compromise. We have eight parking spots, including one handicap space. In response to the feedback I received from Commissioner Martinez, we will be adding bike racks in the front, which will incorporate into our revised plan. Slide 6, please. As a committed partner, I've consistently supported local initiatives. Previously, I've contributed to Yland Save Our Oceans funds, collaborated with the City of Eureka, Humboldt County Housing Authority on affordable housing projects. And the City of Costa Mesa, I'm eager to continue this tradition. I have identified some local nonprofits listed on the slide to partner with and have already donated $250 to each organization. Additionally, I am joining the Chamber of Commerce, the City of Costa Mesa. I've set goals to allocate 2% of the Humboldt Connect's LLC annual revenue for local nonprofit donations and community support. Slide 7, please. Our community outreach efforts have comprehensive and proactive. Initially, we mailed notification letters to all residents and businesses within a 500-foot radius, informing them of our dispensary opening and inviting them to feedback. We also scheduled a community benefit meeting. Personally, I've visited 15 nearby businesses to gather feedback, receiving reactions ranging from neutral to positive. Notably, I engaged with Ally McDermott, Ministry and Event Coordinator at the Crossings Church, which operates an onsite daycare across the freeway. Although this does not create a sensitive-use buffer issue, for me, I prioritize building a positive relationship with them. Ally was receptive, supportive, appreciative. Our compliance with city and state laws and expressed gratitude for our outreach. While attendance at the community meeting was modest, our collective outreach efforts indicate overwhelming community positivity towards our potential dispensary. Slide 8. As my understanding, the city might have some concerns about being too many dispensaries in the city and the overlay saturation of certain areas. To proactively address this, I'd like to highlight four key differentiates that set Humboldt Connect LLC apart. First, financial stability. As the building's owner, I enjoy financial security, flexibility, and protection from rent increases and enabling a long-term planning. Two, industrial expertise. With over a decade of cannabis experience, I bring depth and knowledge to the marketplace. Three, vertical integration. My complementary businesses, cultivation, manufacturing, ensure streamlined operations, enhancing quality, control, and robust margins. Four, prime location, high visibility due to high car traffic, allocated parking, and operation efficiency thanks to the 900-square-foot footprint, making our location attractive to customers. Mitigates the risks associated with the market saturation, ensuring a unique valuation proposition. Slide 9. On this slide, I'd like to highlight the benefits I'll bring to Costa Mesa. In addition to providing access to safe and sustainable cannabis and beautifying an existing building... existing building, I'm dedicated to supporting local nonprofits and community programs. Other economic benefits include contributing to the city's tax revenue, supporting local businesses, and creating jobs for Costa Mesa residents. We aim at a local hire rate of ninety percent. Additionally, I plan to implement eco-friendly practices and promote economically sustaining business operations. On this slide, I'd like to highlight the benefits I'll bring to Costa Mesa in addition to providing access to safe and sustainable cannabis and beautifying an existing building. I'm dedicated to supporting local and nonprofit communities. Slide ten. Thank you, dear commission, for your attention to our position. We appreciate the opportunity to present and are happy to provide any additional information or clarification you may require.
All right. Mr. Trent, thank you. You could have fooled me. You're a great public speaker.
You think so?
I do. I really do. You tried fooling us.
I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Colleagues, questions for the applicant? Commissioner Andrade?
Thanks so much again for your presentation. Something that stood out that I don't think, I think at the time that I've been here, I've heard before, is this concept of the two percent of revenue to be donate, of sales, to be donated to community-based organizations and services. Can you maybe elaborate a little bit what that looks like? Maybe clarify it?
Yeah. I would donate it to one of the four or five nonprofits I've already donated to, or equally all four or five.
And these nonprofits obviously are aware of the business type?
When I made my donation, I told them what it was. I'm pretty sure, yeah.
Okay. And so that would be, what would be the model for that? Ongoing until a year or two? What does that look like?
That looks like ongoing, the whole time we hold the license.
Okay. Awesome. Awesome. And tell me more about, I appreciate your efforts in recruiting and hiring local residents to help with, right, job rights here. You mentioned something about training, professional development. What does that look like at your, at Humboldt?
At the Humboldt Connect? Well, we would take people from Costa Mesa, ninety percent of them, and train them, whether they would be of a managerial position or a sales position, it would all kind of vary on what position they would hold, or whether they'd be working in the back or answering phones. So it would all entail a little bit of difference depending on the role they played.
Yeah. Okay. So based on whatever level of experience, you would maybe supplement whatever, for whatever role that they'll fill?
Yes.
Okay. Awesome. And how about those eco-friendly operations? Again, that's something that I haven't heard in applications in the past, so I'm just curious, what does that exactly mean?
So, we would use like eco-friendly packaging as opposed to maybe plastics. We would try to use stuff that was recyclable or, you know, biodegradable.
Okay.
As opposed to the cheapest possible thing to put something in.
Yeah. Other than that, you know, based on the map that we saw earlier from staff, so we heard that the one right next door is going to be something else, what are your thoughts on, you know, keeping that competitive edge with those that are further down the block or anticipate to be further down the block?
Well, I'm vertically integrated, which is a lot different than most of the other applicants. I hold the licenses for cultivation, distribution, and manufacturing. A lot of our products will be different and of better quality, I believe, from smaller farmers and not so, like, generic. I go a lot to these dispensaries, and I see like a lot of the same products, and the same dispensaries will be different from all that.
Got it. So is it pretty much all your products will be Humboldt products orally? I don't know, the flower?
Primarily, yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Anyone else? Mr. Trent, I might have a question or possibly two. On page two of your applicant letter, under the last bullet point under business outreach, it says, "The list of businesses that didn't object to having a cannabis dispensary nearby or were supportive of it is below." Do you, can you bifurcate this out or like split it out into two for the ones that actually supported the use versus ones that did not object?
I can tell you the ones that were not for it. Everyone else was pretty neutral, but I think he sent in an application or a letter saying he was not for it. He's in the storage unit behind my building, which I don't think I really affect him in any way.
No. I mean, I'm just curious if the list of these businesses include those that did not weigh in or have any opinion at all?
The list that I provided has, I think I put everybody on there that was good for it and everyone that was maybe neutral.
Okay. All right. I think those are maybe all of my questions for the moment. So unless anyone else has a question, we'll go ahead and move along. All right. Mr. Trent, thank you.
Thank you.
Now open for public comments. And if you'd like to speak to this item, you're welcome to come to either podium. You'll have three minutes, and at the one-minute mark, you'll hear a ding, and then it'll just cut off at three minutes. So we'll start with you, sir.
Thank you. A little deja vu. Sorry, my phone went off. It was an alarm to call my mom to take her meds. I am Jason Piazza. I'm a lifelong resident of Costa Mesa. I grew up here, went to Estancia High School. Got three kids that I'm raising here now, ages twelve, ten, and six, and I'm really excited about having Humboldt Connect in the city. I am a cannabis advocate. I've been to a number of these Planning Commission hearings, but not all of them. I'm coming to the ones where I'm excited, and I'm excited to have a boutique dispensary in the city that isn't necessarily selling the same products as all of the other dispensaries and a nice, small footprint. I'm really excited about this operator. I think that the changes to that building are going to really help beautify at least that small section of street front that he'll control with his own property ownership. The parking is great. I'm just really very excited about this particular applicant being able to potentially open up a dispensary and get some new product. Really quite simple. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Piazza. I'll tell you, my, on the topic of Estancia, my mom was first graduating class at the high school.
She's got me by a little. I graduated in ninety-three, so.
Okay. A little before your time.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a different campus now.
Yes. Thank you. Anyone else in chambers wish to speak? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Ryan Swan, and I've known Chris since nineteen ninety-seven. We were tennis partners in high school. I don't know a whole lot about the cannabis industry, but I want to tell you about my Haven't met too many people like him. Single father, raised four kids, two daughters that are grown now without help. If anybody's a single parent, you know how hard that can be. Huge heart. Everybody that he can help, he wants to help. Up north, he's built, I can't even tell you, countless low-income properties to help the people there, giving back to the community in Eureka and Humboldt County. Overall, really good dude. And so I just wanted to speak to his character on that behalf. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else in chambers? See, we have a couple more people. No? All right. Anna, if we can turn to Zoom or telephone, for those on Zoom, you can use the raised hand option, or those on telephone, you can hit star nine. Anyone?
Yes. My name is Michael. I'd just like to speak a little bit about the relationship I've had with Chris Trent over the years. I've had the privilege of knowing Chris for close to twenty years now. Our long friendship has shown me what an incredible man of character he is. Throughout the years, I've seen firsthand how consistently he leads with integrity, honesty, honesty and a genuine heart for others. Chris is not only dedicated as a family man, but also a selfless provider to who consistently puts his family and the community first. His commitment to serving others is unmatched, and quite frankly, Costa Mesa is incredibly fortunate to have someone like Chris working alongside them. He's the type of person who also goes above and beyond, making sure every project and every person is given his best effort. As someone who has lived in Costa Mesa, I'm familiar with the city and can confidently say that Chris's involvement is truly an asset. His contributions to this community are immeasurable, and I'm proud to call him a very close friend and a strong leader. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Anyone else, Anna?
Jackson A., you may provide your public comment.
Jackson, welcome.
Hi, it's good to be here. My name is Jackson. I am a longtime resident of Eastside Costa Mesa, born and raised. My father actually lives.
Jackson, if you could just speak up a little bit, we're having a little trouble hearing you in chambers.
Okay. My apologies.
Thank you.
My name's Jackson. I'm a longtime resident of Eastside Costa Mesa. Was born at Hoag Hospital, graduated Newport Harbor, class twenty-sixteen. Go Sailors. Yeah, I really, my dad lives in that area of Twenty-first and Orange, and I think that the building design would be a great thing to help revitalize that area, kind of give it a nice new touch-up, you know, with like the more modern design and, yeah, I feel like, I feel like this would be a good development. That's all I really have to say.
All right. Thank you. From one Newport Harbor graduate to another. Thank you. I didn't go to Estancia. Do we have anyone else, Anna?
Call-in user, ending in four zero one, you may provide your public comment.
Four zero one?
Hello?
Hi.
Yeah, hi. I just wanted to make a comment. I've been following along, again, with his other colleagues, Chris Trent, for many years in the cannabis space as well. I have a company, California Cannabis Consultants. I analyze a lot of what was happening in Los Angeles and understand the cannabis industry in depth. I've been associated with Chris mostly on business, but as well as a colleague and a friend, and I can, I wanted to just let you know that through the years, he has been working so very hard to get this done, and I've never seen anybody as frustrated at some points, but also as passionate and as dedicated to really make something happen where, you know, where he had lived for so long and where he lives today. And I think it's important that council member champions this with him, and I've seen that sort of happen along the way. And it's, the time is now, obviously. Many places in Los Angeles have done well and also done not so well, but because he is what I understand to be close to one of the first ones to be getting approved, and the fact that he is someone that leads with integrity and kindness, as well as community acceptance and neighborhood sort of friends, and I don't think you could find a better leader in the cannabis space for Costa Mesa. And I think moving forward, I think that he, what he will do and what he has shown me to done in other locations in California is, is really make something that is better than anything and more cost-effective to the consumer as well, taking care of the community, and of course, the tax base. That is all important to grow Costa Mesa with the money that is needed fiscally. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else, Anna?
Sean, you may provide your public comment.
Welcome, Sean.
Yeah, hi, everyone. My name is Sean Waddell. I've had the pleasure of knowing Chris for, you know, almost twenty years about, and I actually grew, I grew up in Orange County, born and raised in Costa Mesa. Both me and my dad were born at Hoag, but I didn't meet Chris till I moved up north. I moved up there when I was nineteen into Humboldt County, and I ended up renting from him, and he became a really good friend, and I worked at one of his farms up here and really connected with him. I recently moved down to, back to Costa Mesa about two years ago with my family, down by Back Bay, and my, I was working for my father, and his job kind of went down because of the economy, and Chris hired me as a foreman for one of his properties. So I've been working for him for the last two years down there now. So, I mean, he's an extraordinary individual, generous. He helps my parents out when they need it down here. He put like a Ring camera in their front door, and so I've worked, I didn't know him in Orange County, but I met him up north, and he's been, he's been a valued friend. And so as a third-generation resident of Costa Mesa, went to Costa Mesa High School, I wish I would have known him when I was down there, but I didn't. So, but I can attest to his integrity and compassion and his business acumen, makes him an outstanding entrepreneur, and I know that it would be a good thing for Costa Mesa. So, and you can even ask my dad if you want, Rick Waddell. It's helped out a lot. That's about it. Thank you, guys.
All right.
iPhone user, you may provide your public comment.
Welcome, iPhone user.
Yes, hello. I'd like to say that I've known Chris Trent. My name is Brian Michael Barash. Hope you're all doing well. I've known Chris Trent for about ten years now, and he's very responsible, a great business owner. He's like crossed all of his Ts and dotted all his Is. It'll be a big responsibility to give somebody a license, but he was the perfect fit for this type of opportunity. He's worked very hard. He's had this goal for a very long time. He's worked very hard to get to this goal, and he's just genuinely a good, honest person that loves to help people out, and he's all for the community, to keep people safe, to keep himself safe, and I really wish and hope that you guys do this guy justice and give him his goal, give him his dream. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Eric, you may provide your public comment.
Welcome, Eric.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Eric Trent. I'm here today to speak in support of Chris. Chris is an exceptional entrepreneur and even better person. As my cousin, I've seen him thrive in cannabis and in real estate, impressively juggling multiple projects while maintaining impeccable attention to detail and punctuality. Chris's unique blend of business savvy, vision, and integrity makes him a standout leader. His passion for the cannabis industry is matched only by his commitment to excellence. I've witnessed his success firsthand and wholeheartedly endorse him as a trusted partner and innovative entrepreneur. Thank you for your attention.
All right. Thank you, sir.
iPhone user, you may provide your public comment.
Welcome, iPhone user.
I'm truly not good at public speaking, but I'm from Humboldt County, and I've known Chris for about six years. I do, I'm a general contractor. I worked on multiple properties owned by him, and I can attest to the fact that he does work with housing, low-income families, and we are currently working on a drug program that he wants to open in my county, which is needed, sad to say, but I just wanted to say some good things about him. I've never been to Costa Mesa, but I can attest for what he has done in my county, and he's employed numerous people in my county. He's brought business to my local lumber yards. When he does do renovations, he doesn't cut corners. He spends a lot on doing the renovation. He spends a lot on doing the renovations. And it's helped my community immensely. That's about all I got to say.
All right, thank you very much. And you're always welcome in Costa Mesa, so come visit, okay?
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Brian, you may provide your public comment.
Welcome, Brian.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Brian Esser. I'm an Orange County native and a registered nurse. I've known my friend Chris for over 20 years. And reiterating some of what you have already heard, he's a dedicated father of four and someone deeply committed to improving the lives of others. Chris's real estate work across California is focused primarily on affordable housing. And while this project is different, I believe his dispensary will bring valuable benefits to Costa Mesa. As a nurse, I've seen how safe access to cannabis can improve patients' lives personally. And I believe this dispensary will provide that important access. It will also create local jobs and generate additional tax revenue for the city, which is great. And I'm in strong support of the project and I urge you to also support Chris's application for a conditional use permit. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you very much for calling in.
Lance, you may provide your public comment.
Welcome, Lance.
Thank you all. Thank you for your time. My name is Lance Berish. We've been friends, me and Chris, since high school. And we've been friends and we did a little bit of business together. When I launched my business back in 2010, I had a tight budget, shoestring budget. We're working out of my dad's vacant unit in Orange. After outgrowing my dad's unit, I was scrambling to find a space with, you know, not that much credit history, that sort of thing. And I got lucky that I ran into Chris, had a conversation with him about leasing his vacant unit in Santa Ana. And that turned out to be a blessing. He gave me a commercial space that was in a good area, very reasonable on the price and flexible month-to-month terms. Since then, I went and leased my own place. He helped me find a building in Lake Forest, which I'm in now, that I closed on in 2023. And, you know, having connections like Chris, having somebody with integrity and trustworthy and all those attributes has helped us along in our business and our growing business. And I wanted to just take a few minutes to say thanks and, you know, speak on his behalf, on his integrity and that sort of thing. And I thank you guys for your time.
All right, thank you.
There's no one else, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. And colleagues, do you have any further questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none. Mr. Trent, do you have any closing comments? Nothing? Okay. You're so good at public speaking. Commissioners, do you have any further questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Motion made by Vice Chair Toller. What is your motion, Vice Chair?
I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of SEQA for guideline section 15301 and approve conditional use permit PCUP 240010, subject to the conditions of approval contained in the resolution.
All right, thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Rojas. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I don't, I don't have too much to say. I mean, this is a, a small little site outside of all those circles we drew on the map a few years ago. And it's gonna, it's gonna breathe some life into a area that needs a little life breathed into it. And I think we have a good applicant with a solid reputation and I have no concerns about this project.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. And Commissioner Rojas, no comments, you said?
No comments other than the second one he just said is.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Kleepack, any thoughts on the motion?
Sure. Yeah, I'll be supporting the motion to approve. It's great to have so many character witnesses. I feel like I'm lacking of friends now. That was really impressive and it's a really good insight just into your integrity and character and your experience as a business owner. And I look forward to this building being brought back to life a little bit, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Kleepack. Commissioner Andrade, any thoughts? Commissioner Zick?
Hopefully you're not too nervous anymore, Chris. When you and I met, I told you I wasn't a big fan of cannabis, but I'm a big fan of your character and a big fan of your patience. It's been three or four long years for you and you're finally here and I wish you good luck with your business.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Zick. I'll go ahead and finish us out in saying that I'll be supporting the motion from the vice chair. And kind of echoing what Commissioner Kleepack was mentioning in that you have a, a volume of character witnesses who took their time to speak on your behalf. And it, it, it's pretty evident that people feel very strongly about you, Chris. And they think very highly of you. And in addition to being an excellent public speaker, you have great friends. And, you know, there, there's a lot of positivity to this. I can, I can see from your presentation and in the application that you feel very passionate not only about your sector of the economy, but also what your sector can bring to the world more broadly. And I think there's a lot of us up here, and, and I know most everyone's backstory up here in that we, we feel that same thing, that depth of wanting to take whatever we have and giving and spreading, which is part of the reason why I think most of us are up here in the first place. So if the cannabis industry doesn't work out for you, you might be a future planning commissioner. Okay? All right. Unless anyone else has any further thoughts, call the question.
That motion carries 6-0 with Commissioner Martinez recused.
All right, thank you, Anna. That decision is final unless appealed to the city council within seven days. Mr. Trent, team?
Sorry, that motion carries 5-1 with Commissioner Andrade voting no.
Okay, still holds. Congratulations. That decision is final unless appealed to city council within seven days. Good luck. Thanks for being here. That brings us to old business, new business. We have neither. So we'll move on to departmental reports, starting with Mr. Yang, Public Services. Mr. Yang?
No public force report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, sir. Development Services report, Director Jopkin.
Nothing tonight, Chair.
All right, City Attorney, Mr. Preziosi?
No report, Chair Earth.
All right, that brings us to the end of our meeting. We will now adjourn. We'll see you next time.